Welcome to the first business meeting of the Mayor and Commission for 2017. And I'd like to take this opportunity to wish everybody a happy and a prosperous new year. If any of you would like an agenda that are with us tonight, they're out in the hall on the table to the, just outside the door and to the right. And for those who are joining us remotely, you can access an agenda from AthensClarkCounty.com. If any of you tonight have any electronic devices, cell phones, or any other devices, I ask that you please turn them to silent or to off. There'll be three opportunities tonight for citizen input. The first will be on our consent agenda, which are items one through eight, then all business, nine through 12, and one final opportunity at the end of the meeting to speak about anything that anybody wants to talk to us about that wasn't on tonight's agenda. Our rules of commission allow three minutes per comment, per citizen, and there's a timing device on Ms. Bratton's desk, which will be green when you start. It will turn yellow when you've got 30 seconds left to let you know that your time's almost up and ask you to please finish your comments by the time it turns red. And we also ask that you please refrain from any kind of demonstrations, including applause during our meetings, and that if you have handouts that you want to share with them, give them to Attorney Barryman, he will share them with us. So we're going to begin tonight's meeting with our swearing in of our returning commissioners. Judge Tate, would you join us, please? And if our returning commissioners, Mr. Hamby, Mr. (Gosh, I better look at my list here, I'm going to lose mine). Commissioner Sims, Wright, Harrod, Neesmith, and Hamby, if you will all come forward and join the judge, she will swear you in and make you legal for another four years.
Seven times the charm.
Seven times the charm.
I do solemnly swear that I will well and truly perform the duties of Commissioner of the United Unified Government of AthensClark County, Georgia, and that I will support and defend the charter thereof, as well as the Constitution and laws of the State of Georgia and of the United States of America, so help me God.
I do, yes.
Very good. Congratulations, Commissioner Hamby, Commissioner Neesmith, Commissioner Sims, Commissioner Harrod, and Commissioner Wright. And I would like to announce, Mayor, that I did administer the longer form oaths required by the State of Georgia downstairs immediately before this public ceremony.
Great. Did any of y'all that wanted pictures get an opportunity to have a picture made with the judge and with your family? We'll take a minute if you'd like to do that. This is an important night for all of you.
We do.
Okay, okay, great. Thank you, Judge Tate, and congratulations to our returning commissioners. I look forward to working with you and your other fellow five commissioners for the next two years, and then y'all have to work with another mayor after that. But thank you, this is a nice night for all of y'all, and you look very nice. Ms. Bratton, would you call the roll for us, please?
Dickerson?
Here.
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 Wright?
Present.
Bailey?
Present.
Neesmith?
Present.
Vale?
Here.
Harrod?
Present.
Gertz?
And Hamby?
Here.
Thank you. Do I have a motion for the approval of minutes of December 6, 12, and 20?
So move second?
Have a motion, second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Now, we have one more official duty, the election of our new mayor pro temp for 2017. Commissioner Sims, do you have a nomination for us?
Madam Mayor, I would like to put in nomination the name of Mrs. Allison Wright for the mayor pro temp, and I want her to know that the pay is tremendously well, doubles her salary, but she'll enjoy the opportunities.
And she gets overtime if the mayor's gone too much.
Yes.
And for y'all out there that don't know, this is all in jest because of nothing additional financially that goes with this.
There's a lot of addition.
Do you have a second to the motion?
I'll second that, Mayor.
Thank you. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Congratulations, Ms. Wright.
Thank you.
I've already given her a couple of jobs for January. So we've got one more thing that we have to, and that's establish the dates of our, and times of our meetings for 2017. I believe you have an ordinance, Mr. Barryman.
Yes. An ordinance establishing the date, time, and place of regular meetings of the Commission of AthensClark County, Georgia, and for other purposes.
Okay, is there any discussion or motion?
Well, yeah, I would like to put a substitute motion in that we change our meeting time to 6:00 instead of 7:00, giving people an opportunity to get in here and use transit a little bit better for the length of the meeting. So that's a substitute motion I'd like to make.
I'll second, yeah.
Have a motion, a second. We had two seconds, but yeah. Did you want to have further discussion?
Can I just clarify something? That just talks about the regular meeting. Does this also apply to the, I'm assuming it applies to the agenda, say, meeting as well?
Yeah, I thought that was in the ordinance as well.
Oh, is it? I'm sorry. I guess I should have read it.
It's not in the ordinance, and Bill, what would the procedure be for us to change both those meeting times?
Let me scroll down to the ordinance.
Because I think it only addresses the business meeting.
That would require a change in the rules, the commission rules.
Okay. So should we just address just the business meeting tonight, and then we can deal with the rules later?
Yes.
Does that suit everybody? Okay, we have a motion, second. Let's do a roll call, Ms. Bratton.
I'd like to hear from the other commissioners and see if there's any issue with this before we go on.
Sure.
I think one commissioner having a problem with it is enough to...
Yeah. Mr. Bailey?
I like the idea, but I will say that for people that work until 5:00 or a little later, it doesn't give a lot of time to get fed and home and changed and all that good stuff before you come to this meeting. So you'll have commissioners, some staff, and certainly attendees of the meeting, who really haven't had enough time to get ready and prepare. They'll be sitting in this long meeting starving. Now, that's just a downside of it.
Sure.
I'm not necessarily strictly opposed to the idea. If we start earlier, we get out of here earlier, but it's just a thought.
Any further discussion before we vote? Mr. Neesmith?
May I ask if 6:30 would be more desirable for you, Commissioner Bailey?
I think that there's very little difference between 6:00 and 6:30. So, you know, whatever the rest of the commission wants to do, if they want to move it to 6:00, it's fine with me. 7:00 is fine, too. Just, I think that some people won't have quite enough time to prepare.
Well, we have a motion on the floor. We'll vote on that motion, and then if it doesn't pass, we'll see what to do next. Would you do a roll call, Ms. Bratton?
Wright?
Yes.
Bailey?
Um, yes.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Vale?
Yes.
Harrod?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Link?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Okay, Mr. Jim back there, take note of that, that the time of our meetings will be changed to 6:00 for our voting meetings for now. And now we'll start our New Year's, New Year off on a positive note, and I'd like to ask Margie Lawrence and Kent Williams to join me up here at the front. For hard-to recycle materials that protects the natural environment, the citizens of AthensClark County, and it preserves the quality of life for our citizens and their environs today and into the future. Since the opening of the Charm Facility, over 5,000 residents have delivered material to the Charm for reuse, recycling or proper disposal, contributing to over 300,000, that's where I got that big figure from, Suki, that I was struggling with this afternoon, of hard-to recycle materials diverted from our local landfill. And we couldn't do it without these guys here, and they're part-time, and they do a wonderful job for us. And so this is our little board that y'all helped us get. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you all for being here, Mayor. And now, if Ms. Suki Jensen would come up. Oh, I thought we had one for Suki, too. I'm sorry, Stacy. Stacy, is Stacy here tonight? Good to see you again, Stacy. We get to see this lady at least once a year because she just keeps on getting awards. And this one is the award from the Keep Georgia Beautiful Foundation, and this award is for the daffodil planting that was done on our Loop 10. And on October of 2016, on the MLK Day of Service, 233 volunteers, seven site leaders, four police officers, and six planning committee members spent four hours planting 25,000 bulbs on the heavily trafficked state corridor that serves as one of the gateways into the Athens community. This collaboration is celebrated for being a successful collaboration between AthensClark County, Keep AthensClark County Beautiful, and the Georgia Department of Transportation, the ACC Government, and the community and volunteers. And I'll have to tell you that I have had more positive appreciative comments about this particular project than any in my six years as mayor. So thank you, and I really look forward to seeing them in full bloom again next spring.
Great.
So, thank you, Ms. Stacy.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. And is Butch McDuffie here? Oh, there he is, hiding in the back. And while Butch is coming up here, I'll show y'all this. I didn't get this bigger write-up when I was elected mayor. Front page of the paper.
(Inaudible).
Well, it is for something well-deserved and very important, so I got you a couple of examples of it.
Thank you.
And our own Athens Transit Director, Butch McDuffie, has been named the 2016 Outstanding Manager of the Year by the Georgia Transit Association for his efforts to improve public transportation in Athens and throughout the state. For 15 years, Butch McDuffie has worked with local elected officials, state legislators, to improve awareness of public transportation opportunities, develop legislation, and identify alternative funding services, sources, excuse me, for all public transit systems across Georgia. And some of you may remember that we got, I believe, was an $8 million grant.
Six million.
Six million. Well, it should have been eight.
We got, well...
I think the university got eight, but to help us upgrade our transit system, to have dual-fuel vehicles, that, have we ordered any yet?
They're on order.
They're on order, but I understand it's a back order?
Should be the spring of 18.
Awesome, yeah. So Butch is an industry leader who is called upon by his peers around the state and the nation for input and insight into the day-to-day challenges of operating a public transit system, said Robert Height, the President of Georgia Transit Association. His leadership while providing public transportation service that is integral to the community led Athens Transit being selected in 2016 as the Community Transportation System of the Year by the Community Transportation Association of America. We wouldn't have gotten it without you, Butch, thank you. He's instituted policies and procedures, developed budgets, and sought out grant opportunities that make Athens Transit one of the most efficient transit systems in the country. And this, that was all quote, a quote from Mr. Height, who's the President of Georgia Transit Association. Mr. McDuffie is a three-time President of Georgia Transit Association, a Georgia State Delegate to the Community Transportation Association of America, and a founding member of the Community Transportation Association of America. He's continually worked with the Georgia Legislature, the Federal Transit Association, the Georgia Department of Transportation, and many local communities to develop new governance policies, procedures, and guidelines to help improve public transportation, not just for Athens, but for the whole state of Georgia. He's also served 15 consecutive years on the Board of Directors of Georgia Transit Association. Congratulations, Butch.
Thank you, Mayor.
Very proud of you. And I know you have a lot of help in the transit department.
Oh, yeah.
Without leadership, these wonderful things wouldn't happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, if you had a mustache like that, you'd have gotten heart to go like that, too.
No, I just won't grow that wheel, I'm sorry. So we will now proceed to our consent agenda, and our consent items are items that have been discussed at public meetings and reviewed by our leadership team and are on consideration to be voted on as a single item, and only one vote will be taken. Any citizen who wishes to address one of these items, which are number one through eight, this would be the time to come to the podium, give us your name and address, and which item you're speaking to. Any comments on our consent agenda? Okay, seeing none, we'll come behind the rail. Is there any commissioner that would like to remove something, Ms. Link?
Yes, I'll remove number three, please.
Okay.
Yes, sir? I'd like to remove number four.
Anyone else want to remove anything?
We really want to do this yet.
Okay, I'll entertain a motion.
Madam Mayor, the ordinance.
Thank you, Mr. Barryman. I think you've got a bunch of them.
There's several, indeed, yes, thank you. An ordinance to amend the code of AthensClark County, Georgia with respect to parking restrictions on Harris Street and for other purposes. The next is an ordinance to amend the code of AthensClark County, Georgia with respect to sale of alcoholic beverages on a designated Sunday and for other purposes. And the last is an ordinance to amend FYI 2017 annual operating and capital budget for AthensClark County, Georgia, so as to provide funding from Oconee County for two additional positions in the District Attorney's Office and for other purposes.
Thank you, Mr. Barryman. Do I have a motion?
Madam Mayor, I move for adoption under Consider agenda lists, items numbers three and four.
You have a motion, you have a second.
Second.
Did you get that one, Jim?
Yes, ma'am.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we will now move to our citizen input for the rest of the items on our agenda, which are our old business items, which are items nine through 12. Anyone who would like to speak to one of those, this would be the time to come to the podium and let us hear what you have to say.
Happy New Year. Ron Thomas, 230 Beach Creek Road, Athens, here representing the Oconee Greenway Commission. Just want to thank Mayor and Commission for considering these. We recommended neighborhood connectors to the Greenway, and we did act on those, and unanimously recommend those for your approval on this agenda, and thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chanas. Anyone else?
My name's John Greider. I live at 285 Savannah Avenue, Athens, Georgia. I'm here on behalf of a little group within AthensClark County. We're Athens Bike Polo, and we currently play on UGA's campus, but we, the facilities there are like kind of lacking. We don't have a lights. There's, we play kind of on a basketball court, so there's poles on the ground that like potentially you could run into while you're on a bike. And for people that don't understand really what bike polo is, I'll give a little explanation. It's three people on a bike, three-on-three, a team, and you just try to knock a ball through a little goal. So recently, we've, since we don't have lights and the court's not really the right size, we've been looking for a new place to move to. I've been talking with Dr. Link about potentially moving to Lay Park. So I'm over here just trying to get some backing for us potentially moving and playing on the tennis court at Lay Park. I saw that there's, you all are thinking about resurfacing the park currently. We've tried to talk with the park and let us play there. They keep giving us kind of the runaround of why they don't want us to play there. One thing, they didn't want us to remove the poles from the courts, so we offered to like pay for new poles if they'd pay to have them installed, and I think they're scared that we're going to tear up the playing surface. But I can say that the people play on tennis courts. They play on, play bike polo in Atlanta on tennis courts. I know in Memphis, and Asheville, North Carolina, Raleigh, North Carolina, Tallahassee, Florida, they all play on tennis courts. So I was just here to talk about, let you all know who we are and what we do, and potentially using parks within the city. Thanks.
Thank you. We learn something new every day. I had not heard of bike polo until recently, hadn't heard of pickleball until recently. I understand it's one of the fastest-growing sports, at least in Clark County, so thank you, Mr. Greider. Anybody else? Okay, we'll come behind the rail, and we'll start with item number three. And Ms. Link, if you wanted to discuss that?
The mayor snagged me on the way in here to address this, and I just wanted to take the opportunity, when we're voting on extending the Neighborhood Residential Parking Permit Program, to make the request that the Government Operations Committee be assigned this program to possibly expand it. I've received calls from folks who live on at least a dozen streets over the past couple of years, who would like to see their streets added to this program, and I actually received comments from at least four different people just in the past two weeks about a couple of more streets. There's been a lot of growth in, particularly in the Prince Avenue Corridor and the Hancock Corridor, you know, with fraternity houses opening up and some medical offices expanding, and the Health Sciences Campus getting up and running. So we're seeing a lot of parking problems in some of our neighborhoods, and the mayor grabbed me on the way in and assured me that she'll be assigning this to the Government Operations Committee, so hopefully we'll be getting a lot more streets added to this program very, very soon. So I just want to let folks know that, and I'm happy to put it back...
Well, we've already voted on consent, so...
Never mind, sorry.
Okay, so...
I'll move that we go ahead and adopt this parking...
Have a motion, do we have a second?
Ordinance.
Oh, I thought you read all the ordinances that were in, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Barryman.
An ordinance with respect to amending the Deering Street Residential Parking District and for other purposes. Second.
We should have a motion, a second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number four, Mr. Neesmith, you had that one pulled.
Yes, ma'am. There had been some questions raised by a citizen about our charges, our fees for food truck permits, and in particular, they had brought up the charge that Atlanta has, looking at simply the permit fee, which is $515 in AthensClark County and $125 in Atlanta. And Manager Williams looked into this matter more closely and discovered that those comparisons are not the whole picture. To make a long story short, we include the, the permit, the permit includes the ability to park in a parking meter space. Atlanta's does not. They must feed the meter while they are there. There's some other differences, but according to Manager Williams' numbers, our annual cost is somewhere around $700, and Atlanta's is closer to $1,400. So the concern about our fees being too high, for me, have been, have been removed. So I don't mind putting this back on the consent. I'd like to hear from other commissioners if they have, if they have other things to say about this. That's, that's what I'd like to hear, if any other commissioners have any concerns.
Any other commissioners wish to address this?
Hearing none.
Would you like to make a motion?
I would like to make a motion to adopt this ordinance.
I second.
All in favor?
Ordinance.
I'm sorry, Mr. Barryman, I need to read them all at once.
An ordinance to amend the code of AthensClark County, Georgia with respect to mobile food vendor permits and for other purposes.
Thank you. Now, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, our next item is number nine, which are park facilities improvements under our SLOST 2011 Project 16, Sub-Project Project 8 through 15. Anybody like to talk about those and make a motion? Ms. Wright?
I'd like to just acknowledge Mr. Greider's concerns about bike polo and the opportunity to kind of diversify the use of some of our facilities. I know we have the farmer's market on the tennis courts at Bishop Park. I've actually had a yoga class under the pavilion on the tennis courts at Bishop Park. I'd just like to ask staff to consult with the bike polo folks and the greater community to talk about the best possible way to carry out this resurfacing so that we can assure that as many uses as possible are gotten out of our facilities. I know there might be other options, maybe basketball courts or something, but I just want to encourage some communication to assure that this resurfacing and then these facilities improvements are to the benefit of the most people in our community as possible.
Thank you.
With that, I'll move that we go ahead and adopt this.
Thank you. Ms. Wright, you want to be recognized?
Yeah, I'll go ahead and second it, but I did want to add, too, that we've got several things coming forward this year, including the audit of the leisure services, which is addressing, are we addressing the needs of the community and how we can better learn that we're making sure our facilities are meeting the needs of the community? And so that's going to be coming forward, and I think some master plan things are going to be coming forward, so we'll just keep everybody impressed at what they are, but I don't think it would hold up this process that we're looking at right now, so I second this.
Right, okay. Ms. Neesmith?
Yeah, I just want to point out a couple of things. One is that even though the farmer's market sets up its tents underneath the basketball pavilion, a couple of things to consider. One is that pavilion is in very low use for basketball. It's not a desirable pavilion for basketball. I mean, I'm sorry, for tennis. Tennis is what I'm talking about here. And that we, the Athens Farmer's Market is required to put padding underneath the legs of the tent to protect that surface. So we can't say that just because the farmer's market can use a tennis court that others could, too, for different purposes. We also have, you know, new sports that are appearing, and you mentioned pickleball, which is a sport that's being taken up by us older folks, and it's becoming very, very popular. And we really don't have the right facilities for that either. And then there's bike polo, which is at the other end of the age spectrum, I suspect. So perhaps we should look at other facilities in the future to accommodate those sports, which are important to their patrons and are both growing. So I, I'm going to support the motion to go forward, but I hope that we can look at the next SLOST or something and see if we can't come up with some facilities for these kinds of sports.
And I actually think we got a report back from our manager today. Would you like to address that, Mr. Williams?
Well, I would, and we'll, obviously, we'll certainly talk to anybody and certainly, hopefully, not giving anybody the runaround. But it is, you know, tennis court surfaces are special in particular to that, and pickleball has been able to coexist quite successfully, and so we've been pushing for that. But, you know, from having bikes, even at the skate park, we've had some damage to the surface, and that's concrete. So, you know, I think that these folks, or some folks, have been offered the basketball courts at Memorial, Lay Park, East Athens, and Sandy Creek to do bike polo, but we haven't really heard back from them on that.
Okay. We have a motion, a second. Y'all ready to vote? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, we'll now move to item number 10, which is the Sidewalk Gap Program and FYI 17 project concept. Have a motion or discussion, anybody?
Yeah, I would like to move that we go ahead and approve A and B and deny C, which is moving ahead with construction of a parallel sidewalk on the plaza. I made a few phone calls and reached out to some folks in our alternative transportation advocacy community and some folks who live over in that neighborhood, and I walk that street very frequently, usually at least once a week, often even more than that, and it never ever occurred to me that the sidewalks on that street were inadequate. It's not very highly trafficked. You know, we possibly could use a little more traffic calming, you know, when the cars do go by, they tend to be a little bit fast. It's seen some great improvement around the curb with some pork chops and stuff, and I just feel like to add a parallel second sidewalk on the street would be rather extravagant when there's so much dire need in other, in other areas. I mean, in the immediate area, definitely Holman and the other side of King, you know, that I feel like there's greater need maybe for some crosswalks across the plaza and Hancock and Glen Haven and places like that. I just, I really feel like the greater good of the community, this money could be better spent prioritizing some other projects. You know, it's, I just don't see the tremendous need. I know there, it ranks very high for connectivity in nearby facilities, but it ranks very, very low for the traffic and the pedestrian usage. You know, people don't seem to have a problem crossing over and using the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk on the opposite side of the street, and I just really feel like that $106,000 could be better spent in somewhere where there's a greater need. And I know this is very, a very easy project to start. It seems to be shovel-ready, you know, because we own the right of way and it's pretty level ground, but I don't feel like we should be, you know, fast-tracking something just because it's easy when there's greater need in the community, and that money could be spent elsewhere. So I'd like to move that we deny C and allow that money to be funneled to projects where there's greater need.
I'll second.
Have a motion, a second. We have a substitute motion on the floor.
You know, that I feel like there's greater need maybe for some crosswalks across the plaza and Hancock and Glen Haven and places like that. I just, I really feel like the greater good of the community, this money could be better spent prioritizing some other projects. You know, it's, I just don't see the tremendous need. I know there, it ranks very high for connectivity in nearby facilities, but it ranks very, very low for the traffic and, and the pedestrian usage. You know, people don't seem to have a problem crossing over and using the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk on the opposite side of the street. And I just really feel like that $106,000 could be better spent in somewhere where there's a greater need. And I know this is very, a very easy project to start. It seems to be shovel-ready, you know, because we own the right of way and it's pretty level ground. But I don't feel like we should be, you know, fast-tracking something just because it's easy when there's greater need in the community, and that money could be spent elsewhere. So I'd like to move that we deny C and allow that money to be funneled to projects where there's greater need.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second. We have a substitute motion on the floor, so we'll need to vote on that first. Will you do a roll call for us?
It's not a substitute.
Sir?
It wasn't a substitute.
She just basically denies, wanted C to be denied.
Yeah, I'm moving that we adopt A and B and deny C. A and B are the project concepts for the whole list, and C is the construction of the plaza.
No one made the motion for it.
Yeah.
Mr. Bearman, point of order, because if we, if we vote this with the deletion that's on it tonight, and we have a, does that kill the original motion if we, if this one's voted down?
Well, this, this was a commissioner making a motion to adopt A and B, but to not, he just wouldn't adopt C. It wouldn't be adopted at all.
Okay. Okay, let's have, let's have a roll call vote, Ms. Bearman.
Link?
Yes.
Wright?
Yeah.
Bailey?
Yes.
Neesmith?
Yes.
Hamby?
Yes.
Vale?
Yes.
Harrod?
Yes.
Dickerson?
Yes.
Sims?
Yes.
Nine yes, zero no.
Okay. Move on to item number 11, which is the Oconee Greenway's network connection. I'm sure Mr. Neesmith would like to open that one for us.
I would, and I, this, the process getting here, as I've said before, has been exemplary. It's gone through all the hoops. The folks, especially Melanie in Leisure Services and her team, have done a great job in refining this and communicating with the Greenway Commission and letting the Greenway Commission really sharpen it up a little bit, and so I'm going to make a motion that we adopt this ordinance.
We have a motion, we have a second, Ms. Link. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, well, that takes care of all of our items on our agenda, so if there's any citizen who would like to...
Audit.
Audit.
Oh, I'm sorry. Totally left Ms. Maddox out, and that's a very good report. Would anyone like to open the discussion or make a motion on item number 12, which is our Audit Committee recommendations for our Leisure Services Summer Camp Program?
I move that we adopt the report.
Second.
Have a motion, a second? Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Well, you did a good explanation for us at our agenda study meeting. So now we will go to our citizen, I found citizen input, which is anything that any of you all would like to talk to us about that was not on tonight's agenda. This is your opportunity to have your three minutes.
Can I say something again regarding the...
Other than what you've already spoken on?
Yes, ma'am.
Sure.
Again, John Greider, 285 Savannah Avenue, Athens, Georgia. Like I mentioned before, there's a lot of people that play Bike Polo on tennis courts. I know there's some, like, people that are adverse to it, and I've talked to people about playing on basketball courts, but what we're really looking for is we have to have a fenced-in area, has to be completely surrounded and fenced in. If it's not, the ball goes shooting off in all kinds of crazy directions and things like that. In regards to Lay Park also, and I know you all, you all just talked about resurfacing the park, I guess, up here in nine official park improvements. I personally have been going over to that park ever since August to just kind of like check on it and admire what it could be for, like, Athens Bike Polo. I've seen tennis balls on that court that have sat there for so long that there's roots growing out of the felt. I've seen the same pieces of trash on that court, week after week. I know there's $40,000 in lights that you put in at that court, because I put in a request for that information. You have $40,000 in lights that I've never seen turned on. So maybe it's just use at all would just be nice, is all I'm asking for.
Thank you. Thank you for the information. Anyone else? Okay, we're going to go now to our report time, and I get to be first, because I'm the mayor. So, so we have nominations for our hospital authority appointments of Mr. Allen Reddish, Alex Patterson, and Kim Rips. Do I have a motion to approve these three nominations?
Some.
Have a motion by Ms. Bell?
I'll second.
Second by Mr. Neesmith, all in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Congratulations to Mr. Reddish, Mr. Patterson, and Ms. Rips, and we appreciate you being willing to do this, because I don't think it's going to be an easy job. We also have two openings on our Land Bank Authority, and I'd like to nominate Melissa Link and Joey Tucker to fill the unexpired terms of Kathy Horde and Mike Hamby, who asked to be replaced on this. These terms will run through October 31st of 2017. Do I hear a second to my motion?
Second that one.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. All in favor of Melissa Link and Joey Tucker for those?
I'll make the motion.
Yeah, I made, yeah, yeah.
Hamby.
Hamby made second, yeah.
I'm sorry, I didn't make the motion.
Well, I made the motion for, for the recommendation, but if, pardon me, the procedure requires that we can let somebody else make the motion.
I think so.
Yeah.
So he'll make the motion and I'll say...
Actually, I always thought that nominating committees did not require a motion, only a second.
That's true. They do not require a second.
And don't require a second either, so, so, okay, we will vote on those two. All in favor of Melissa Link and Joey Tucker?
Aye.
Okay, congratulations, Melissa. I think you'll enjoy being on that committee. And now we have another item of business for tonight, and it's the appointments of our three standing committees, which are Government Operations Committee, Legislative Review and Audit. And for Government Operations Committee, Andy Harrod will be the chair, members Diane Bell, Kelly Gertz, Mike Hamby, and Melissa Link. For our Legislative Review Committee, Jerry Neesmith will be the chair, members Jared Bailey, Sharon Dickerson, Harry Sims, and Allison Wright. And the Audit Committee, Diane Bell will chair with members Jared Bailey, Sharon Dickerson, Kelly Gertz, and Allison Wright. And I appreciate the work y'all have done last year and look forward to what you do this coming year. And for the record, I'll let y'all know who the other Land Bank Authority members are. We just put Melissa and Joey Tucker on. Alice Kinman chairs that committee. Andy Harrod also serves on it, and Keisha Payne, who is a representative from Tax Commissioner's Office. And then I have one more item tonight, and that's, I would like to refer to the Government Operations Committee, a review of our parking permit program. And actually, I was thinking that we had looked at that more, more recently, but I went back and checked our records and found that it has been going into the third year now. Actually, Kathy Horde, who's no longer on our commission, chaired the GOC at the time. And I think it's, you know, there has been a lot, there have been a lot of changes in the community. I think it's a good opportunity for us to look at this program again, and perhaps even look at the methodology by which we do this, so that we don't have to have specific streets and have to come back to the Mayor and Commission every time there's a street, or maybe have a, have a more expedited process than we have now. So if y'all would take a look at that, Andy, I would appreciate it. And so that's all I have. Mr. Williams, do you have anything for us?
No, ma'am.
Mr. Bearman?
No, ma'am.
Ms. Maddox?
No, ma'am.
Okay, well, we're going to go around the room and see what our commissioners have to say. We'll start with Mr. Harrod and go clockwise around the room.
What do I have to say? I got lots of things to say, but I'm not sure we have all of that time. I guess just a couple of things. Happy New Year to everybody, and I know that five of us were sworn in this evening. I know that the election was a long time ago now, but I would certainly like to thank all of the people that voted for me to return me to the seat, the district vice representative on the county commission. Thank you.
Ms. Bell?
Happy New Year. I'm happy about a lot of things, but Auburn orange for our hang tags?
Blame it on Jean.
Jean, you're a perfect lady, but this is a, mm. Well, okay, if that's what it is, I'll accept it. Thank you.
Mr. Hamby?
Thank you. I too appreciate being able to serve again and appreciate the voters who put me back in. Only downside is that we still have to work with Commissioner Harrod, but I guess we'll, we'll figure out a way to work around that.
At least I've got you separated by ladies.
Yeah, after eight, after eight years, I finally feel like I'm getting to know how this job is done, so, and it can be confusing day in, day out, but I think it takes a while to, to get going and hopefully, hopefully provide the type of service that our community expects out of us. And, and having New Year's resolution, then hopefully we'll second more motions this year, so, so we'll see. I don't know what that means, but it sounded, I thought it sounded funny, so.
Your resolution was going to be to be on time.
Ms. Dickerson?
That is really hard to follow, Madam Mayor. I too wish everybody a Happy New Year, and I do have a resolution. Now that I have more time on my hands, I want to be a better commissioner, a better husband, and a better grandfather, so hold me to that.
About time.
Ms. Bailey?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yes, like everyone else, I'd like to wish everyone, including our staff and the rest of the commission and the mayor, Happy New Year, and I'm looking forward to it. Glad 2016 is over, and that's really about all I've got to say. Thank you.
All right.
Ms. Bailey?
Happy New Year to everybody, and I am honored to be having more time with the mayor and staff as mayor pro tem. It's really an honor to be appointed and have a unanimous, I think, vote that I had on that. I would like to ask that whatever change we need to make to the rule to adjust our agenda study meeting, so that it's at 6:00 as well, if that can come forward, or let me know what I should do to have that come forward. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Happy New Year. I, yeah, 2016 was a rough one, and, and I fear that 2017 and the next few years could be even rougher, and I hope that we, as a community and a local government, can take the initiative to do everything in our power to protect our citizens and protect our environment in the face of federal changes and deregulation. I think we have a real responsibility to do that, and the responsibility to our citizens. You know, we do consider ourselves a progressive community, and I, I'm sure that that's what the people of this community would want. I also want to just clarify a couple things about the sidewalk program that we voted on. There was some, a few questions about it. This, the program that we voted on was strictly a program to fill gaps, where there were, you know, short stretches of sidewalk to connect existing stretches. And there is a bike and pedestrian master plan process going on out there, and hopefully there will be a lot more completed sidewalks proposed, and hopefully some funding coming out of our TESBLOST process. So I look forward to seeing a lot more sidewalks in places where there is really, really dire need, because there are a lot of places where there's dire need, and there are places where it's not exactly easy to build a sidewalk. You have topography and private property issues to deal with, so I'm looking forward to that.
Thank you, Mr. Sims.
Again, as everyone has stated, Happy New Year to everyone. I want to thank the staff that, for all that they did in 2016. We have one heck of a staff that works for Athens Clark County, and sometimes we don't say thank you enough, and, you know, they are great people, and I appreciate each and every one of them. And I want to thank the voters that have given me my seventh term as a commissioner to represent them, and I don't know, it's either a grudge for punishment or don't know any better, whatever the case may be. But again, I'm grateful that they saw fit that I would have an opportunity to do this at least one more time.
And before we get to our last commissioner, I would like to do something I neglected, and that's to thank our mayor pro tem for the last two years, Harry Sims, because he's been very good at keeping me on track, and, and he's, he's been available at a moment's notice, anytime he was needed, and you've done an absolutely wonderful job. You've got some big shoes to fill, Ms. Wright.
He knows everybody's names.
That's what happens when you retire, you know, you say, this college...
Sorry, sorry, Mayor.
Who's that?
She's going to put me back on that land.
What's his, what's his name over there that's going to go back on the Land Bank Authority?
So moved, Madam Mayor. Go for it.
Ms. Dickerson?
Call the question.
Thank you, Mayor. Happy New Year to everyone as well, and I hope that everybody behind the rail and on the other side and watching at home has a resolution to get more involved this year. Certainly an impetus this year, based on the election, to get more involved, and I hope people will. And I have two great ways for you to get involved. One is this Saturday, January the 7th, at the University of Georgia Tate Center, the Grand Hall at 10:00 a.m. is the Fifth Annual Chess and Community Conference. Our own manager, Blaine Williams, will be one of the speakers. I don't remember the other gentleman's name, but there's another gentleman that's speaking as well, and I apologize for not having pulled that out in time. But it is a chess tournament for youth seven through 18. There will be an essay contest and an art showcase, and the theme is really about, is working towards what these students, these youth, want to see the future of Athens look like. And the essay contest, I think there's a $1,000 prize, and I think it breaks down in a couple other ways. And then because of your program, I believe, the Community Improvement Program, the community, Chess and Community also got some money for the art contest as well, so I appreciate that. And if you want more information, you just go to Chess and Community, and it's spelled out A-N-D, not the ampersand, but A-N-D.org, Chess and Community.org. And I'm actually going to go play. I just learned over the holidays with my son, and they're killing me. I've only won one game, and it was just by chance. They weren't paying attention. So I'm not going to, I'm not going to be a huge amount of competition for any of these kids, but hopefully any of you all that know how to play will join us as well. The other way is the Envision Athens effort has kicked off. We actually have our first five public input meetings the end of the month. I've left some of these out on the table, out in the hallway. We will be putting out a fair amount of information through meetings, through emails, other opportunities. There'll be posters up around town and whatnot to let people know.